It is, what time? 9:04. Oi. Call this meeting to order. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Kennard to lead us in the pledge. And Commissioner Finnegan, do you mind doing the invocation?
Thank you. If you're able, please stand with us, willing and able. Also, please silence your cell phones.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, thank you for this day that you have blessed us with. Thank you for this time that we can come together to better our community. We are so thankful for our staff in Citrus County that's put a presentation together for us and for the commissioners here all working together to try to do the right thing. I pray that, Lord, you bless us with your wisdom and guide us through this day. We love you and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Good morning. Okay, at this time, I would ask the clerk, deputy clerk, to do the roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. This is a public workshop of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners. This is 23rd day of May, 2023. And attendance are Chair Ruthie Schleba, First Vice Chair Holly Davis, Second Vice Chair Rebecca Bays, Commissioners Jeff Kennard and Diana Finnegan, County Administrator Steve Howard, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamond-Lund.
Okay. So we have a presentation today. I don't have an agenda for today, this 9:00 AM, right? Where is it? I just have this. Yeah, thank you. I did not have one. I do not have one.
I don't either.
Commissioner Davis also does not have one.
I don't think I need one, do I? It's just a presentation.
Okay, so at this time, we have the workshop for the residential road resurfacing. And Mary Jensen, our Public Works Director, and Walt Eastman, Technical Service Division Director, will present the residential road resurfacing workshop. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Mary Jensen, as the chair said, and I'm the Public Works Director. I'm going to present the road resurfacing workshop. And I want to recognize two people that worked very hard on this. And that is Charles Lezot. He's our Engineering Operations Manager who has three staff under him. And that is Charles right there. A lot of times when I get your emails, I run it over to Charles and helping me understand what's the seven or 10 or whatever the ranking is. He's a great asset. And also Walt Eastman, he's our Technical Services Director for his work on this presentation as well. All right, so let's start off. So one of the most important challenges that our county faces is how to evaluate, maintain, and rehabilitate our existing roadways. And there's a couple of reasons why we're having a difficult time. The traffic vehicles themselves have actually gotten heavier compared to long ago. The vehicles actually are getting bigger, heavier. And we also have more traffic in Citrus County. So our roads are deteriorating faster than they used to. And it's just a progressive thing. So if you flip to the second page. So Citrus County has approximately 1,844 miles of county-maintained asphalt roads. That includes your residential and your SCOP roads. SCOP is Small County Outreach Program. We get a small amount every year from the state and we match that. And we do our larger collector roads like 46, 491, those bigger collector roads. So of the 1,844 miles, 321 are major and minor collectors. 311 miles are those SCOP roads. And then the 1,523 are the residential roads. And if you look down at that pie chart, what it is showing you is 44% of our roads are ranked a 7 through 10. Now, 10 is the worst. So 44% of the roads in the county are ranked a 7 through 10. And that includes our SCOP roads as well. So, and then 37% are 4 through 6, so they're not that much better. And then we only have about 19% that are ranked 1 through 3. So we have a lot of fair and poor roads in the county. You'll turn to the next one. So basically, we're going to break it down into districts. What does that mean? So 800 miles, it's actually, the actual number is 811 if you do the percentages right. But over 800 miles of county-maintained asphalt roads are rated 7 or worse. And what does that mean for the commissioners in their districts? We've kind of broken that down. You can see that 14% of those 7 through 10 are District 1. 11% are District 2. 38% are the chair's district.
Ooh, winning.
We have 28% in District 4 and then 9% in District 5. So that kind of gives each of you an understanding of your districts and why we hear more from some of the chair, more than some than others. And that's kind of what the telltale sign is. So what does that mean in dollars? So if you gave me a check for $188 million and I had the staff and the contractors, we could get all these roads up to a 6 or better. So that's the price tag we're looking at. And that's everything SCOP and residential. And that would give us 6 and below. So everything, it wouldn't give us all 1s. We'd have them at a 6 or below. Any questions on that? Guys, good? Okay, well, let's go to the next one. So we're going to talk about residential roads. So it's choosing a treatment. It's right here, it's the cross-sections. So when we look at roads in Pine Ridge and Citrus Springs and people get confused as to why it's so expensive, the way those roads were built, unfortunately, it costs us a lot more to do the resurfacing on them because we have an extra layer we have to put on them and we also have SOT. So if you look at those two cross-sections, most of the residential roads are going to be that 186,000 because they have that lime rock base. And those are typical in all the districts except for Pine Ridge and Citrus Springs. Once we hit those roads, those are very different with that soil cement base. And so unfortunately, we have to do a little bit more to them and it's more costly. And we have to put two layers on there. And so it is now 315,000 dollars for a mile of those. And that's really the difference when people see that and they wonder, why is it so expensive for certain roads? So, moving on to the next one. So just a historical or history lesson, kind of where we've done in the past. We used to do worst to first. That is, we took all the roads that were ranked a 10 and we did them. And it didn't matter if people lived on them or not. And I think the past commissioners said, wait a minute, because they started getting complaints. Why are you doing this road with nobody living on it? Why don't you do roads with people living on them? So then the commissioner said, okay, we'll do commissioner selection. And they have done that in the past where they tell us which roads they do. We want this road and this road and this road. And then more today, what we've done is we did the road rating, so 7 through 10, based on density. So it's kind of the worst of first, but it can be a 7, 8, 9, or 10. And then we take into consideration density. We don't do the worst of first without density. We used to do a 6 through 10, but now we do a 7 through 10. And what that means is more people, when builders come in and they look at roads, they're probably not going to build a brand-new house on a 9 or a 10-ranked road. They're going to build houses on those 7 and 8s. So when you see us out there resurfacing, it's more always the 7 and 8s that get paved. It is not the 9 and 10s because the 7 and 8s have more density and they fit that criteria of a 7 through 10 that we've been directed by the commissioners to do the resurfacing on. So you do get a lot of calls and people, you know, they'll drive by and say, why is this road getting paved? My road is much worse. And they're right, their road probably is a 9 or a 10, but there's not the density on there that unfortunately the 7 and 8s have. Okay, moving on to the next. So how do we pay for that currently? It's through the gas tax. So the 7 through 10 are sorted by density. So basically, what does that mean? If two roads are equally rated a 7, one has nine houses, one has 10, the road with the 10 will be resurfaced first. They're selected that way until all the budget is blown. Basically, would be used in the entire budget each year. And as I explained earlier, all of the funding is usually applied to those 7 and 8 roads because 9 and 10s are not as dense. So we do have a Citrus Springs MSBU, which many of you are familiar with. And the Citrus Springs MSBU uses our ranking system. So Charles does the ranking system with his staff. And we give that to the Citrus Springs MSBU. They collect $30 per lot for no house, $35 for lots with houses on them. And this money is pooled every year. And that money determines how many roads they will pave. And they are strictly worst-to-first in Citrus Springs. They do not do density. So in Citrus Springs, you'll still see those roads that have nobody living on them but are being resurfaced. And so that is why you may get the calls that somebody's saying, nobody lives on this road. Why are you resurfacing it? Well, it's not the county's principle. We're doing that density. Citrus Springs MSBU does not. They just simply do 10, 9, 8, 7. So that's the current methodology in how we're paid. So on the next page, we're going to look at a couple of options. And this is just with residential. It's not our SCOP roads, it's just with residential. And what we did is we took all the roads to do these options for you for 2024, what we would do in 2024. And so we have that nice little map for you. And if you look in red, you'll kind of see the areas that would benefit from that option. And so option number one is our current methodology. That's what we do right now, that's 7 through 10 based on density. And so as you can see, we're resurfacing 36.47 miles. And we're benefiting approximately 2,229 homes. So we're getting a lot, we're hitting a lot with the way that we do our current methodology. Again, that's 7 and 8s, not your 9s and 10s unfortunately because the densest roads are your 7 and 8s. If you flip to the next option, we kind of looked at, okay, what would it be like if we gave that money to each district based on the miles of roads you have in your district? So, and that would be 7 through 10 based on density. We would still use the same methodology, but we wouldn't do the county as a whole. We'd say, okay, you have X number of miles in your district, you get this piece of the pie. You have X number of miles in your district, you get this piece of the pie. And then we would still rank them, the 10 through 1, and we would just do 7 through 10 based on density. And as you can see, it's kind of spread out. The map kind of shows the red lines as spread out per district. And we're getting slightly less miles. We're getting 36.12 miles when we do this per district. We're benefiting 2,340 homes. This is a good thing for 2024. In the future years, what would happen is the districts that have less 7 through 10 roads would get all their 7 through 10 roads done. And then they would start benefiting, they would end up in the 9s and the 10 roads that nobody lives on. So this number would eventually go down if you chose option 2. You know, because you still have one district that's going to have, their 7s are still doing, they have a lot of 7 roads, 9s, you know, 8, 9, and 10. You have another district that has, say, 9% that are ranked 7 through 10. And they'd get finished with theirs and then it would be doing those last 10 that nobody really lives on. So it would go down of who we benefit.
Mary, in that situation, the, in my district that has the most people, the most problems, the 7s are always going to jump the 9s. They're always going to jump the 9s. The 9s have no hope. So that, there needs to be something looked at percentage-wise for District 3. And then it goes to District 4 and so on.
Correct.
We're never going to correct it.
Correct. And you know, this is just to get the commissioners and the public understanding different ways to slice the pie. We only have so much funding. What are different ways we can look at it? And this one, you know, we've discussed it. A lot of citizens have discussed it with us. It is a possibility, but what do you do with the 9s and 10s? And what do you do with a district that only has a small amount of 7 through 10s and a district that has a huge amount of? It's, how do you want us to slice the pie? What we're doing now is working, we're benefiting a lot of homes. This is just one more thing that we would have to discuss. Opening up the floor for discussion.
Thank you.
So option number three, we looked at just improving lots, not based on density. And you'll see, this one's an oddball one. If you can think, if you can see who's benefiting, you have a road way down here in the southeast corner. So think about two farmers. They live on a mile road. And one owns one whole side of the road and one owns the other hot side of the road and they have their two houses, right? Bays is nodding, okay? That would be 100% of that road occupied. And that would go to the very top versus another road that has 20 lots. And out of those 20 lots, 19 have a house on them, but there's one lot that doesn't. That road would be behind the two farmers. So the two farmers would get their lot paid, you know, repaved, resurfaced. So that's just another thing, looking at it totally without density, looking at just the road and who's occupying it. So that has its benefits and its detractors. But as you can see, we still get a lot of miles paved, 35.5, but we don't benefit a lot of people for that very reason, only 1,231. So that's another way to slice it.
Mary, I would like to see what would happen with option 3 if you did 8 plus and then 9 plus.
Okay.
Those, that breakdown.
Okay, we'll look into that. Thank you. Okay, turning to option 4, and this is how they used to do it. We just wanted to do the worst-to-first, show that. It doesn't get you a lot of miles paved, simply because we all know worst-to-first is very expensive. You're looking at roads that have completely deteriorated and we have to basically rebuild them. And so you're going to get the less mileage, the 23.61. And because you're going to be working on those 9s and 10s, 10 roads that don't have a lot of new homes on them, they're very sparse. You're only going to, you know, make 621 homes happy. So that's kind of the worst-to-first and why we changed from that methodology. So those are just kind of, with the numbers and the data for 2024, kind of what it looks like, how many miles of road we can benefit. If you turn to the next slide, they're all together. It kind of gives you a snapshot of kind of a comparison. These are four options we have heard about, four options we have tried. And you can see the miles that are benefited from each one of those. Any questions on that? Okay. And then finally, we'll go to the last presentation, which is the money shot. I love this slide. It's striking. But basically, it tells you if we had 6 million, 10 million, and so forth, a year, what that would mean, would we ever catch up? And the answer, the magical answer is for SCOP and residential resurfacing, this is both of them combined. We would need 38 million a year to have our roads finally ranked below a 6 and be taken care of. And we could then move into that preservation maintenance, not redoing the entire road. We would actually move to a maintenance program eventually. But why, what this graph means is when you only have a little bit of money and you're doing your 7 through 10s, your 1 through 6s are still aging and they're still breaking down. So you're not touching your 1 through 6s. And so this tidal wave is still coming. So when we only spend 6 million or 10 million on the roads, you still have this tidal wave of roads that are aging and deteriorating. And as they age and deteriorate, they become a 7. And so then, depending on which option we do, you know, if we do the 7, it becomes part of another 7 and we never get to the 9 and 10s and those are now dirt. So it's just this tidal wave. And that's really what this graph is showing, is that you need a lot of money to fix the problem. It's basically about 20 million for residential and about 18 million a year in SCOP roads is what we would need to really be able to keep up on that tidal wave, stop the tidal wave, get it into a preservation maintenance. That's really what you want because preservation maintenance funding is a lot more inexpensive. And once you get on top of that, you stay on top of it. So that is all the presentation I have. Can I take any questions?
Board? Any questions? Commissioner Finnegan?
Thank you. Hi, Mary.
Hi.
I was just curious on the last graph.
The money graph? Okay, yep.
At the 30 million, it looks like year five, we're at 100%. Why, I guess with inflation, it just seems like it fails so drastically after that. Like, you know, if year five, we hit 100% and then it says year eight, we're only down to 85%. I mean, were you not figuring the, at 30 million, the inflation? Or you're just, I mean, it just seems so drastic.
Yeah, all these include inflation. And I believe what is happening, these are formulas, so it's not going to be a perfect. But when you have 30 million and you're starting out with these roads, everything seems to hang in there pretty high. This is actually pretty high when you look at the other ones that never really get off the ground. But what happens is as you move into that five to 10 year, you're starting to have roads that are just disintegrating. And so it's just, it's just something we can't keep up on it. It will fall drastically from a higher amount than a lower amount because as you can see, the lower amounts are pretty much flat. We're not really doing anything with the lower amounts. We're getting a blip. But that's why the 30 million will fall so far so fast because we take a huge jump and we go, yes, let's try and attack it. But we're still not attacking it fast enough and hard enough and with enough money. So you will see that huge drop because it has a long ways to fall. Where the others, you don't see that drastic because they have nowhere to go. They're already there. They're already, they're already on the ground floor. We're not really making a big leap. So you do see the drastic fall with the 6 through 1s deteriorating faster than we can keep on top of it. And I don't know, Charles, you want to say anything? Okay.
Board? Commissioner Bays?
If we looked at our total budget for the year, do you have any idea?
So our total budget for this would be 8 million currently. And that is just residential, that is not SCOP. Our SCOP is 2? About 2 million, so 10 million. So you can look at the 10 million graph and that includes your SCOP and your residential. So if you look at that orange line, that's kind of where we're at currently.
And our gas tax is just shy of 9 million?
Correct. So we get SCOP funding, which is about a million? About a million a year. And then we match that and we use gas tax and abhorum to help us get that.
And in our current budget cycle, what do we have in CIP? For roads?
So your CIP is not in this part. This is, your CIP is going to be different. So currently, we do have that CR 491 that we're doing in our current CIP. And that is around 35 million-ish dollars for the current?
Yes, for the next phase.
Yeah, for the next phase. It's about $35 million in that. We got a substantial amount to pay for the construction for that, but everything else we had to come up with. And I believe it was a 50% match for construction. So we came up with the money for the real estate and the design and all that for the 491 project that's currently started. Right now, they're moving utilities and things like that. So you won't see really any groundbreaking until next year.
What are, when is our 486 transportation bonds paid off? Do you know?
I was thinking 35. I don't have that. I don't know if Erin knows. I was thinking 35. I would have to get back to you on that. I know some fall off in like 34, 35, somewhere in there.
I guess it, for me, it's, if we went back, I saw that there's a workshop that they did in 2014, 15. So at that time, 35% of our roads were in good condition compared to today at 19. And 37% in fair, back then it was 61.6%. And poor was 2.5% compared to 44%. And we had less than, we had .067 that needed complete reconstruction. I mean, I can tell you, we've been kicking this can for a long time. And it's evident by looking at this report from 2014, 15 that it's not going to get any cheaper. It's, we've got to figure a way out of this. I know that we're going to have a workshop on MSBUs, TUs. However, I think we have to look at some sort of a blended model because to say that the residents are going to pay the entire bill for that when we've carried long-term deficits of not paving, I think we have to figure out how we're going to do that. I just, we have to stop taking on projects and things until we get this fixed. To me, this is number one. This is an investment that we made. It's an investment that our residents made in the communities that they live in. And there's only a few things that we're really responsible for as a government. And we're taking their tax dollars and we work for these people. I'm one of them. But at any rate, this is something we have got to address. This just cannot be deferred any longer. I, I mean, until, you know, I'm at that point where I look at it and I think, if it means that we have to bond some money to get caught up at this point, I'm ready to do that because I think it's that important. We have capacity issues. We have maintenance issues. And before we can do one more thing in this county, this needs to be resolved.
Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, I, thank you. I have said, I've said in the past that I did not think that this was a formula problem, that it was a funding problem. And I think that's right where we're still at. However, I will, I will say that that option number two seemed reasonable to me. I think that gets more money to areas of the county that sorely need attention. So I would certainly, I would certainly be in favor of that. Or if we wanted to keep the same formula, neither option 3 nor 4, I think, are reasonable. So I like option 2. Regarding Commissioner Bays just brought up, it's a funding issue. I'm ready to be part of finding a solution to that. I like the idea of a blended model. I will disagree with one point that you made and I hope that it was just misspoken. But I don't think we need to stop taking on projects. I think we need to stop borrowing money. We've got to have the funds to take care of these projects and then pay for them. The borrowing part of this, you know, we just heard thankfully, 486 is done. I'm glad that previous commissions did that. But we're paying on those bonds now until 35, did I hear, 35, 36? That's a long ways off. I think when we could borrow money at, you know, 2 and 3%, I had advocated at that time that that's probably, this is probably the time to borrow money and take care of some of these infrastructure projects because there's no doubt in my mind at that time that inflation was going up faster than what we could borrow money at. Right now, with interest rates where they're at, the rates that we would pay on this borrowed money, I don't think that's necessarily the case any longer. Maybe for right now, but I don't know that that's what the future holds for us. So I'm on board with finding a funding solution. Uh, so I'm, I'm on board with finding a, a funding solution to this. But I would, uh, I would like to see us take care of, you know, the projects that, that we've got, the stuff that was addressed. Uh, in, uh, in the C, in the CIP. Um, I would like to see us continue on the, on the road to taking care of these things, but we got to pay for them.
Commissioner Bays, do you want to respond?
Well, I would just respond by the fact that it's costing us more and more, so, um, every time. We don't do something and I think it's very evident by these numbers. If in the day when we didn't have the money, if we would have bonded it, we wouldn't be in the position that we're in today, so. I, I don't think borrowing money is a bad thing. I just think you have to be pragmatic about how you go about it and, and. Look at the offsets. So sometimes it's just a, it's a necessity. We, you know, it's like buying a house. Most people buy a house, they have a mortgage on it. If you need a roof, you put a new roof on. You don't wait till it leaks and falls through. Or gets a, a, a hole in it before you fix it. And if that means you have to. Borrow money to get it done, you do to, to defer any further damage to it and I, that's just where we're at. It's an unfortunate situation. But frankly, I, I don't know how we get ahead of this curve at this point. And doing it nine million dollars a year is not fixing it. We're just getting further behind.
Commissioner Davis.
Good presentation, Mary. Couple of things. Number one, on the slide, this slide. What is, it'd be interesting to see the breakdown of, um, SCOP eligible versus residential roads that are. That same chart. It'd be interesting to see that. And then you mentioned the vehicles have gotten heavier and there's more traffic on the roads. Our, I assume our gas tax is probably going up because we're selling more gas in the county. But per vehicle traffic, it's going down because they're more fuel efficient and more electric vehicles, correct?
Correct. That is the major issue is the gas tax is actually going down.
It is actually going down in total amount too? Okay. I was wondering. On the program options, um, have you looked at doing, and I agree with. My fellow commissioners on what they've stated, especially Commissioner Canard being interested in option two, I am as well. Um, I understand that long-term that would not be good, but short-term while we're trying to put a heck of a lot more funding in place. Like I think you said it would be good for twenty-four. That might be a, a quick trying to get some of this stuff done. However, have you looked at trying to do a blend of density plus a percentage of improved lots? Like some sort of minimum, you know, like basically worst to first, but come up with a blended model that. Takes away the farmer's road example, right? And takes away, you know, like a, how, uh, lot in, or a road in Citrus Springs that has one house on it. But takes care of Pine Ridge, for example, that has. A very high percentage of improved lots on a lot of those roads, but they're big lots, right?
So we, we would need direction on that. We would need to be, what do you want us to not include versus what do you want us to include? Is it, is it, you only want us to include, you know, an acre lot and, you know, anything above an acre or, you know, we would need more.
There might be a way to try to figure, to thread that needle to have very few mistakes.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking at a lot of data crunching. I know that, that Charles does an incredible job. His spreadsheets are, are awesome. Um, they're wicked smart and so, uh, you know, you can always do it. It just takes a lot more time and a lot more effort. And we would need guidance so that we would make sure that we're in- including certain lots and excluding certain lots. And we all understand what those are and for what purpose.
And I totally agree with, um, Commissioner Canard. That was nice alliteration. That's the second time you've used it. I'd like to steal that. We don't have a formula problem. We have a funding problem. However. Tweaking the formula or flipping to the option two, you know, for twenty twenty-four might help us. Um, get some people some relief a little bit faster while we figure out how we're going to come up with thirty-eight million. That's it.
I'd like to say that, um, I remember Commissioner Canard talking. About perhaps bonding some of this when the interest rate was very low. I thought it was a, a brilliant idea.
Did you hear that?
I really did because as a business owner, everybody knows that it's great to say. We're not moving forward until we have cash in hand, but like Commissioner Baye said. If your roof is falling in, you're not going to wait until you have cash in hand to fix that roof. You have to do something, even though we don't like it, we have to do something. Uh, interest rates are what? Five percent? Six percent?
We looked at them a few weeks back and yeah, they continue to rise up. I mean, but it's definitely, it's not what you could, could have got a few years ago.
Yes, and it's in every situation that this board is dealing with. Is because that has been pushed down. Oh, we don't want to bond that. We don't want to get, you know, a loan and this and that. And we're having to deal with it as interest is going up. I agree with a, a, a hybrid model. I think that we have to do something and. You know. Of course, for, you know, I'm pushing because I have the most people, the worst roads. And that's what I hear the most complaints about and. We, so I'm going to tell you that I think that we need to look at. Maybe breaking down seven and eights and eight and nine and tens. And putting that into that, even though we're going to still need funding, we, sevens are always going to jump. And it's just getting worse and worse and worse in my area. And like you said, we're hitting a tide, we're, a tidal wave's coming. And we, and it'll be great and it sounds great. We're not going to get any loans. We're not going to bond anything. We're the most conservative board. But we're giving that ten years from now to another board and what are they going to do? So I agree with you that we need to look at, we have to look at it, even though none of us want that, we have to look at that. And, um, that's where I stand because it, it, if we don't do something. We're looking at dirt roads in how many years? I don't know, sixteen years maybe? I don't know where your dirt is. Is your dirt at the twenty-year mark? I, I think we kind of have dirt roads now, so, um, I mean. We're there then. We're, we're, we're right there waiting for this tsunami to come and hit us. Okay. So that's, that's if you're taking a consensus, that's where I'm at. I think that we have to look at that. We have to be a little more aggressive with SCOP money, matching that. Um, because we're growing and we don't know when the SCOP dollars are going to end. And as much as we can get, we need to get, so.
That's where I stand.
Commissioner Canard, then Commissioner Bays.
Yeah, I, uh, thank you. I think that right now, we're, we're matching all the SCOP dollars that we can, right? That is maxed out. Last year, uh, I proposed that, um, uh, that we raise the millage rate. Uh, two tenths of a mil every year for five years and that, that additional two tenths of a mil. Uh, would be dedicated specifically to road resurfacing. Uh, last year was the first, was the first year that we put in the two-tenths increase. And hopefully this board will continue that and will raise it another two-tenths. Until such time that a, um, funding mechanism is there to replace that millage. And when we find that funding mechanism to replace it. I will make the motion that we remove, uh, or decrease the millage rate by every single bit that we've increased it. Specifically to pay for road resurfacing. Um, that, that was a, uh, that was a promise that I made last year. Uh, I am, I am not a fan of raising millage rate, uh, but I will do it specifically. Uh, for this purpose until we get a replacement mechanism. And then I promised a former colleague that I would be the one to, uh, make the motion. Now whether or not the motion passes, that'll depend on the board votes. Uh, but I will make that motion that we, uh, that we remove the millage rate that was put in place, uh, specifically for road resurfacing. So as we start moving into budget season, we need to remember these conversations we're having. Uh, and, and make sure that we're putting our needs in front of our wants. Uh, when it comes to, to funding, because we have got an awful lot of expensive needs that need to be taken care of.
Commissioner Bays.
I'm in favor of, um, Commissioner Canard's approach to this because I think we're a year out. But I think we have, as we go through this, I think we still have to take that blended, um. Position with that in mind that we're going to input or, uh, uh, put in place a, a BU or a TU, whatever it's going to be. A- and you know, I, we just voted recently, this board not, not to accept any more roads. So, um, to me, that is the most fair and equitable way to do that because if we're not, I mean, we have a lot of growth that's coming. And if we're going to have those people pay for it, we have to put in place. A mechanism like a BU or a TU for that so that everybody is equally, um, paying for their roads. And then hopefully we'll continue to get the SCOP dollars. I think we're the only county in the seven, District Seven that's. That qualifies for those and we can keep the collector roads. But what I, I want to impart on this board and the citizens. This is not taking into account or talking about the capacity issues.
Correct.
So be mindful of when we talk about this. Generally speaking, every time we need capacity, the state's looking at us for fifty percent match. And as much as we hear the complaints about driving down your residential roads. We hear the complaints about the traffic everywhere. And if it's not a state road. We have to come up with that match. Whether it's a collector or whether it's a ma- you know, a major arterial, like four ninety-one. We just got an estimate for the last seven miles to four lane that. Hundred and sixty-five million dollars. That's a big chunk of change. And the reason I point that out is because it's considered to be the evacuation route. So. We talk about this in a very myopic look. We look at it just as if it is us. It's not. There's external forces that people that travel around in our community that use our roads. And we have to figure out how we're going to do this congestion. And roadways are so important to your economic development of your community. And the reason I say that is when we have twenty-one thousand people a day leaving this county for a job somewhere else. There, that's your economic development. We need these roads. We need to get this. We need to get in front of it so that we keep those people here for those jobs.
Thank you. Well said. Commissioner Canard and then Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, great point about capacity. This is all just resurfacing. Uh, but I think on June twentieth, my understanding is we're going to have a discussion about impact fees. And, um, I think the capacity issue we addressed with our transportation, at least a part of the puzzle. Is with our, uh, transportation impact fees. Um, I will fully support us going, uh, to a hundred percent on our transportation impact fees. Um, that is, um, that is something that I believe we have got to do because we have, it's not going to be popular with certain folks. Uh, but we have got to do it to, to have that revenue stream to increase capacity on our roads. That it's not just going to appear. As you said, the state will provide fifty percent, but. That ain't going to happen unless we've got the matching funds, so great point.
And Commissioner Davis and then Commissioner Finnegan, I do want to say that you might want to explain to people that that is growth paying for those. That impact and not, when you say people aren't going to be happy with it, it's not you and I that are picking that up, the established people. It's a new growth.
There are, um, certain, um, industries that are, that are not going to be happy to hear about the. Impact fee discussion, but, uh, it ha- it, it has to happen.
Yes. Commissioner Davis.
I almost don't have to say anything because he just said what I was going to say about impact fees. So. To, I do want to say that I agree with taking the millage off when we figure out a, a better funding mechanism. Um, our millage is just really out of balance and that's also going to help with economic development if we don't have such a high millage. So, um, and then I would also, I use the roof analogy all the time. Fiscal conservatism is if you already own an asset and you don't need it, you sell it. And if you do need it, you don't let the roof fall in. And that's exactly what prior boards have done with this by kicking the can down the road. Such a horrible pun, but it's true. All done.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan.
Thank you. So everyone's talking about the roof falling in, so for the roads that the roof has fallen in, forgive me because I'm not an. Expert in road paving, it's, some of you here are. Um, for those roads that just seem beyond hope, beyond repair, the resurfacing's not going to cut it at this point. Um, to help with some cost savings, are there other options for those roads like chip and seal? I know is a thing. Some people do, um, compacted millings or, or lime rock. I don't know what's viable for the county, but when I look at this, I know that we have talked about, you know, using different asphalt. Um, we didn't hear any cost savings, uh, for what we had and, you know, when, um. The previous board, when it was just watching, I was hearing, we need ten million dollars, ten million dollars. That's why I think Commissioner Canard came up with the point two mils. It was always ten million dollars. Then it seemed like months later, I heard the magic number's twenty million dollars. So now today, we find out it's thirty-eight million dollars. It's, that's a huge difference between. A year or two ago at ten million to thirty-eight. So as part of this whole plan, funding and looking at different options. Have we looked at any cost-saving measures and what can we do with those really, really bad roads that cannot be resurfaced?
Yeah, we have. We've been looking at cost-saving meas- measures of the gentleman in the back row. Um, we went through a presentation, uh, just recently, plus, plus Walton, Charles, uh, and Carl. We all went through some presentations. That basically we looked at the chip seals, we looked at the micro paving, we looked at different things. The problem with those are those are done as a preservation maintenance. So those are done, say, four and three rankings. So all the cost savings that, that are fantastic, exactly what you're talking about. Are not done seven, eight, nine, nine and ten road ranking, rankings. Those are literally full-depth replacement once you get to the ten. Um, and that's the issue is that when you don't take care of your assets and you let them deteriorate. You're way past a chip seal and I love chip seals. Um, chip seals are, are phenomenal. And if we ever get to the point where we are on preservation maintenance, you will start to see chip seals. You will start to see those preservation maintenance, wonderful cost-saving measures that will, you know, imply, uh, to our roads. We won't just, uh, do the mill and the resurfacing. We'll actually save money once we get them up to a. Once we have the funding and once we can get them up there. But unfortunately, yes, everything you're talking about. We have to be in a pers- preservation maintenance mode, which is usually three to four ranking. So, yeah, there's a lot of things to save us money if we're above where we're at right now. I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Finnegan. It was ten million, ten million. We sat on the board that kept pushing that. And we knew that, I knew that it wasn't ten million, but the loudest voice kept saying it and if you keep saying it, it makes it true. And the other thing is, is I brought up kind of where you're going, which I really like, that vein of thought. I said with the, uh, CARES Act money and the ARPA money and the beginning in CARES Act money, you could build new roads with that money. And I said, well, essentially some of those roads in Citrus Springs and in Pine Ridge are basically going to be a brand, you know, a brand new build. And if we had, we could have gotten around it by saying, okay, if we lay some kind of infrastructure. Then technically it would meet that category, but you, you know. Y- you know this, you've been here long enough now, you're one vote. And so, um, I, I mentioned that, um, I don't know, a couple meetings ago about. Are some of these roads, maybe it was at the NPO, or some of these roads considered a new, new road at this point.
point? And honestly, when they're in the shape they are, we're going to have to make a new road, a new old road. So, very good. Thank you for, thank you for thinking that way. I appreciate that. And I appreciate that you're being heard about it. So, Commissioner Davis?
Well, that just sparked a crazy thought. If they're really a new, if they end up being a quote-unquote "new road," does, do impact fees qualify? Probably not, but.
It's not really a new road.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, Commissioners? Commissioner Kennard?
Yes. With all due respect, I would have to say that the CARES Act money was not sent out to the counties to build infrastructure.
I know that.
You know, while we can certainly disagree or agree on whether or not that whole CARES program was a good program, it was sent out to the counties to try to help businesses survive what the federal government imposed on us and what some state governments, thankfully ours did not, imposed on us. Well, I shouldn't say that because our state did on the restaurants and so forth. But that's what that money was for. There's supposedly this big pot of gold for infrastructure that the federal government sent out to the states. I don't know if that money is sitting in Tallahassee. I don't know if that money is still sitting in Washington, DC. But there was a massive infrastructure bill that was signed, and we're told funded, but doesn't seem to be flowing down to the counties. So I don't know, I don't know where that money's at. That would be money, that infrastructure money is money that should be put into programs like this. And you know, I'm sure we're looking at that. I just don't have the answers to it. Maybe.
And I don't have the answer. I don't know if any, we're waiting as well. We heard that there was a huge windfall coming, but we have not seen it, so.
Have we, have we reached out to our legislators, our legislative delegation, Missoula and Angola?
I have not personally. I don't know if anybody else has. No, I can certainly look into that.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we do that? Let's reach out to them and, you know, it may, it may take a trip to Tallahassee to sit down with them and explain to them what we're looking at in their, in their district. How do we get our hands on some of that money? I mean, is it, is it an application process? Is it something that they want, they want matching funds to get that money out of Tallahassee? If they do, then maybe we do look at borrowing some money to get, to get to a point where we can repair some of these, some of these roads if we're going to get matching funds to do so. But that money's out there somewhere. I don't know, I have no idea where it's at, but it's there someplace. Let's see what we can do to get our hands on that.
I know that I have sent you the information about the federal money for infrastructure, but I am curious how much of our CARES Act money went to infrastructure. That was previous to me, and I, you know, there was a lot going down for different water lines and sewer lines. Wasn't that part of the CARES Act money?
That was ARPA, I think.
That was ARPA?
Yeah. Not, I'm not 100%, but I think those, that was ARPA funds. And yeah, there were a lot of, we created a priority list of primarily utility projects. And then as the price of those utility projects kept going up, we started shortening and shortening, shortening the list of projects that were going to get done with it. I believe we set aside, I don't recall, I don't recall if it was CARES Act funds or ARPA funds that we set aside for economic development. I had, I had a little bit of a beef with the way some of the CARES Act money was spent. I mean, not to rehash old stuff, but I'll rehash some old stuff. You know, when the immunization sites were opened up, and some of the CARES Act money was used to purchase two of the, two of the like Gator quads, I had an issue with that. Some of the, some of that money was used to, to buy the new televisions and so forth in Room 166 out of the county building, to add the, the ability to broadcast from out there, to record stuff like that. And I just didn't feel like that's what that money was supposed to be used for. But I didn't win those votes.
Again, you were only one vote.
Yeah. But anyway.
Thank you. Commissioner Bayes, any final thoughts before we open this up?
I just want to acknowledge those gentlemen in the back of the room and for all the people that work every day filling the potholes, that are out there in 100-degree weather or if it's cold or rainy or whatever you guys do. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Anything? Final thoughts? Commissioner Davis?
Okay, so, thank you, Mary. Thank you. Great presentation. At this time, I'm going to open it up to the public. If you have anything you'd like to say, if you have a letter on file, you get five minutes. If not, you will have three minutes to speak. All comments directed to the chairman, and please state your name and your address for the record. Thank you.
There are green cards there to fill out to give to the clerk.
My name is Mark Zaveska. Good morning. I live on North Wagon Point in Pine Ridge. I'm here to represent the more than 11,000 members of our community in Pine Ridge. Now, each of the county commissioners has a letter on file from, or a letter from our Pine Ridge Board of Directors, talking about our particular situation, what our desires are moving ahead. Even though you have that, I think it's important. I think it's, we're encouraged by the dialogue that's happening here, but I think it's still important to reiterate the concerns that are expressed in that letter and what we see is what we have to do to fix the neglect that has occurred moving ahead. Now, most of my presentation will be focused on the county problem, which was exactly where your focus is. Our belief is that if you fix the county problem, you fix the Pine Ridge problem. Long-term, getting it to that preservation maintenance standpoint. I'll be followed by one of my colleagues, Don Woods, who will be talking about a drill down into the Pine Ridge situation specifically. So it's kind of a tandem briefing on that one. Our bottom line up front is we'd like to see the county establish funding so that the roads are established on a 25-year recycling process or a resurfacing process. Right now, that means about 74 miles a year and about $16.6 million a year. You recall the briefing that you saw, $8 million a year. That's less than half of what we're doing. If we continue the neglect that's out there, then we have to do something for the Pine Ridge roads. We want a minimum amount of money dedicated to our Pine Ridge roads, and that's about 3.8% of the resurfacing budget. One-half our percentage of the county road mileage, just one-half the percentage. We don't think that's too much of an ask on that one. We think that's a very reasonable ask. Part of the reason is because the county's neglected our roads for 25 years, since they accepted responsibility for them in 1998. By the county's own statistics, we have the worst roads in Citrus County. That's surprising to some people by their statistics. Our roads are on a pace, and this is the rule set that we were just discussing, our roads are on a pace to be resurfaced once every 263 years. That's two decades' worth of data, once every 263 years. We routinely suffer zero funding in the budget, two out of every three years over that two-decade period, we get zero funding. And when we get something, it's peanuts. It's enough to resurface a couple hundred feet, maybe a couple thousand feet. That's by and large. Everybody knows how the county got in this situation. Commissioner Kennard nailed it last year at the workshop, Sunday Chronicle, right here in this presentation. It's about funding. The county has consistently neglected or shorted the roads in favor of other budget items. And there are other budget items that probably should deserve some scrutiny because it's been taken away from that road budget. It's a substantial margin. Funding has been less than half of what's needed, sometimes as little as 25% of what's needed. And that's long-term strategic neglect. You inherited that problem, we lived that problem. And that's where we are right now. All four options that you saw on the slide right there talk about $8 million, about half of what we need. You know, so we're left to argue, using the roof analogy, the roof is leaking, and we're arguing about which half of the hole we're going to patch. The hole is still there, it's still leaking. So what's the, what's needed to fix the county problem? We need to adjust it to that 25-year cycle. Your average road lasts about 20 to 25 years. Anything longer than 25 years, and you know you're starting to neglect your roads, and you should be mindful of the rebuild versus the resurface situation. Got 1,844 miles of roads, you divide that by 25, that's about 74 miles a year is what needs to be repaved. It costs about $414 million to resurface our roads based on the latest data, and that divided by 25, that's about $16.6 million a year. Anything less than that, you're arguing about which half of the hole in the roof that you're going to, you're going to patch. We see based on the estimate of $8 million, the dialogue is good, but the $8 million in the budget is the action that is insufficient. There needs to be more money for this to fix that. And we're really encouraged by the dialogue that's incurred, but we need to see that action on that one. Right now, we're on a pace at the county level to resurface our roads every 51 years, a little bit more than that. That's twice the age, twice the average lifetime of a road. And what puts us into a rebuild versus that sustainable maintenance piece of it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Sir, Mark, did you fill out a green card?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Welcome.
Good morning, everybody. I've got to give kudos to Mary's presentation.
Name, real fast.
Oh, I'm sorry. Donald Woods, Pine Ridge Boulevard, Pine Ridge.
Thank you.
I've got to give kudos to Mary's presentation because you guys have hit it out of the park with a lot of the information you put out today. You're recognizing the problem. Her presentation was fantastic. I'm going to talk about some of the things that people talk to me about within our community. People are out walking on the roads, and some of them are patchwork roads. They're elderly, we're concerned about falling, hurting ourselves just walking, riding a bicycle, for example, even a motorcycle or vehicle, there's, the base is coming up. There was an accident in Pine Ridge about two weeks ago involving a motorcycle, a car. I'm not sure about all the statistics or why, but it was brought up, if it was, accident was caused because the roads were in such poor shape, could somebody come along and sue us? Which obviously, we have insurance for it, but is there a possibility the insurance company could say something to the effect, well, due to it not being properly maintained, does the county then become the liable? And I'm not sure, and I'm not an attorney, by no means. The other thing I'd like to talk about is the density rule. It's killing us. Something needs to be adjusted somehow. I don't know the answer to it. I know the funding is an issue. We all know the background and history of it, that's been well represented today. One of the things in my past history that we came up with as a way of funding was possibly a tax on something that's not being taxed now. There's, I just did a brief glance into some of the other counties. Some of them have a junk food tax, which means everybody pays for it, tourists coming in, everyone, and it's a low impact to everyone as well. Looking at something like that, I mean, we obviously have taxes on alcohol, tobacco, so forth and so on, but is there something else out there that would be more marketable and equitable to everyone? I guess that's about all I really have to say. Thank you for your time. Really impressed with this meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker?
Stuart Bozeman, 4849 South Price's Point, Homosassa. First of all, I want to commend you all and thank you all for paying attention to this. This is important. Staff as well as their participation in putting this presentation together, I thought it was very thoughtful. Concerning 44% in the poor range, 800 miles that are in the 7 to 10 range, let's jump in the car, drive to 75 and go to Lexington, Kentucky, to give you perspective on the distance. I actually mapped it this morning. The funding, definitely a challenge. The question I have is are we spending the money in the best manner? When they came to resurface, fortunately, I'm a beneficiary of the resurfacing program, had my road resurfaced lately, stood out there and watched the contractor do it, questioned them on the type of asphalt. When I found out the type of asphalt they were using, I was very curious about that, using a high-dollar polymer binder, over a one-inch overlay, over a road that significantly cracked with patches. I drove around to one of the roads they had done about three years ago, and I don't know if it was the same asphalt that was used then as was used now, but the cracks are already reflecting back through. So my question and my point is, I think we're doing a great job. I think we're making great progress. We're thinking about it. It's at the forefront of the minds of the people who matter and the people that can make these things happen. Do we need to make it, maybe look at means and methods a little bit, expand it? Are we getting the best bang for the dollar? We're using a high-dollar, 95 friction course polymer asphalt, which I'm very familiar with, in lieu of a DOT, another DOT, alternative, lower cost, but incorporating a one-inch or maybe even deeper milling process. I've run some numbers, and I think the numbers are very comparable. I would challenge staff to maybe at least look at that, look as an alternative. Run some numbers, get some prices, milling, resurfacing with a lower-cost asphalt. It's all about maximizing the number of lane miles that we can get done to shorten that cycle that we're looking at, because we are staring down the barrel of a gun. And I commend you all for not kicking this can down the road again. I think that term's been overused already. But again, that's all I had. I just, I would just like for staff and for you all to consider looking at that as an alternative. Maybe there's, maybe there are some savings there. So, or at least extend the number of lane miles we can get done for the same money. And by the way, the $8 million is a good number. City of Jacksonville's current budget for this fiscal year is 24 to 26 million. But you think about the City of Jacksonville, and you think about Citrus County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Hi, my name is Joan Dias. I am the chairperson of Citrus Springs MSBU. And the reason I wanted to come up here is I wanted to explain what the MSBU does, and I know all of you see in our budget. We raised our, with the Approval Account Commission, our non-abhorrent taxes to the $30 and $35 rate, at any rate. We did that to help with augment the paving or the resurfacing. This past year, or this current year, we're putting in a million dollars to that. Next fiscal year, we've proposed $650,000 for your approval. In past years, we've paid probably close to $8 million of Citrus Springs taxpayer dollars to augment the paving. We, I would disagree with Pine Ridge. I think we have the worst roads in the county, on some of our roads. A lot of those roads now have people on them. They're not all just vacant roads. I also wanted to explain why the board does worst of first. As many of you probably know, much of our money comes from the vacant landowner, right around 70% right now. I don't want to get the county in a second lawsuit, and neither do any of our board members, saying that we're not doing enough for those vacant landowners. As some of you may or may not know, we paid out about $1.1 million to the vacant landowners. I don't know what the county paid for the lawyers. I don't want to do that a second time. So I wanted to explain the worst of first and not with density, and that's the reason. So you see a lot of roads in Citrus Springs that have no homes on them, or the one home on them that are getting surfaced. That's money that those people pay for. And some of the roads now, Lime is one of them, if you ever drive off of East Citrus, no, excuse me, West Citrus Springs Boulevard, that road, maybe rated as a 10, it's probably a 12. It's horrendous, and there's new construction on it. I have a smaller car, I won't even drive my car on it, so I can only imagine backing out onto that every day. The main complaint that I get, like you get every meeting, from citizens, from realtors, from business owners, is the roads need to be fixed. So please, please help us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for serving on that board.
Oh, there's days. There's days.
We know. Next speaker, please.
My name is Rick Lyon. I'm also a member, uh, resident of Citrus Springs. And knowing Joan, I, me and her have, uh, had a lot of conversations on this over the years I've been here. Uh, I don't tend to MSBU's that often, but I am tending here. I've tended here before, speaking on this exact same subject. I'm a former Ohio resident. And ever since I came down here, I found out Florida and the council, commissioners and everything like this, governing bodies, does things totally different from what they do in Ohio. And probably in other states. I'm just, I'm just using my own state cause I know it best. Up in Ohio, they had, have actual county engineers department, separate from the government. Whenever it comes time for budgetary means, the commission, oops, excuse me, the commissioners did not make the decision. County engineer sends his budget to the county. It was up to them to fit it into the, the overall budget of the county. The roads was always, always in very decent shape, if not per, almost perfect. That's one thing I've always had, pretty much a crying shame for down here. And the street I live on, North Joanne, is full of hot holes. Every, every street around me is full of holes. We need them getting fixed. They've been like that just about since I have moved down here ten years ago. They have, they have not improved. And from what I understand, you talk about kicking the can. From what I learned early on, there was a, some boards, commission boards down here in Citrus County that did nothing for four to five years far as roads, because they didn't have the money. You need to find the money. It, it was a, uh, a sales tax increase, or uh, however you wanna try and fix it. But the gas tax is doing decrease. It's decreasing now, it's doing to decrease worse in the next few years. You're not, don't be able to depend on it. You're not, don't be able to depend on eight thousand dollars, mi- eight million, excuse me. And so, you got to take the, uh, the bull by the horns and lassling, wrestling down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Oh, we've missed you.
I'm back.
Yes.
Janet Barrick, Citrus Springs resident. It was a really nice talk that Mary did. Okay, how much do we currently spend in SCOP money? And she finally came up with the two million, or approximately. Okay, the SCOP roads never were considered on any of these other things prior to residential roads. SCOP money is SCOP money, and that's for connector-collector roads, not residential. It may be in residential areas, but it has never been put together, so that threw me off. Okay, we have tourists that come in here. Every day, we push tourism. We have the Tourism Development Council. They're so proud of how much money they make. Why not allow our tourists to help do our roads? And I've been after this for thirteen years. I've been coming here longer than most of you. The only one that wasn't was Rebecca. Okay, and she knows I've been here long enough. I watch this thing. If you were to back an idea on a referendum for residential road resurfacing and repaving only, you do one cent for four years. It's supposed to bring in between fifteen and twenty million per year. That's the estimated cost that we would have. Take that twenty, plus the eight that you have, that's twenty-eight. That's closer to thirty-eight than what you're doing. Option two was a nice option. I like that one. Cause option one, there's not a single road in Citrus Springs that's gonna get paved. Not a single road in Pine Ridge is gonna get paved at option one. Option three and four, I just, you know, I, I sat and I listened to them. They didn't make any sense whatsoever for what situation the county is in. Um, impact fees. Impact fees are a one-time fee for building a house. That's not gonna get very far down the road for what we're trying to do. Slurry, why not go back to what we did with one of the previous engineers that approved it, and the board approved it for Citrus Springs, slurry all the roads? I bet you could get a lot of roads done if you slurried them. Then everybody would be complaining like the residents of Citrus Springs with the deterioration of our tires. Okay, I do have other ideas, BU and TU. That's not fair to anybody. Because if you raise my tax, and a BU and a TU is a tax, if I'm a landowner and I have property, I'm gonna pass it on to my renter. If I'm a li- landowner, I live there on the property, that hurts me. It cuts back on what I have to spend in the county. But if you give me a sales tax, I'm choosing what I buy. And allowing it to be a universal sales tax. All the tourists are giving back to the roads that they're using. They came here for a reason, spend the money.
Thank you, Janet. Next speaker. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the, open to the public portion of this meeting. Chair, board, is there anything? Commissioner Kennard?
Yeah, lots of good comments. Uh, I'm just going to, um, I'll address two of them. Stuart, great, um, great information. And hopefully, staff is already looking at those things. Uh, but coming up to the podium and offering, um, real solutions, um, good information, uh, folks from, uh, I think it was Mark and Donald, did I hear that correctly? Um, thank you as well, good information. Janet, I, I've gotta address a couple of things you brought up. We're talking about road resurfacing, and you mentioned impact fees. The impact fee discussion came up when Commissioner Bayes discussed capacity. Two different monsters, the capacity versus road resurfacing. Uh, impact fees, as you recall, I said is just one piece of the puzzle. Um, we're not gonna be able to get all of this in, in one bite. We're gonna have to find multiple pieces to be able to increase capacity on the roads, uh, that we're facing in that arena. Uh, the one percent sales tax strictly for road resurfacing will not pass. So we've gotta, we've gotta stop having that discussion. I'm not opposed to, uh, putting a, uh, a, a local option sales tax on the refer, on the ballot, uh, for referendum, uh, but we cannot put something on there that is destined to fail. Uh, we have to find a formula that, uh, that the public will support, and then you put it on there. Otherwise, we just take multiple steps backwards. The slurry, I went out, uh, actually, I was involved a couple times, uh, with some roads in the south west part of the county, uh, where that slurry was used previously, and it was all washed down in the, um, uh, in the DRAs, it was washed off to the side of the roads. Actually, went out there with some staff to look at it, and they said, this is why, this is not a good idea. The stuff falls apart very fast, and now you've got other issues dealing with it. We need to, we need to resurface these roads properly. Again, I'll say again, it's not a formula problem, it's a funding problem. We have to fix the funding problem. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Bayes?
Anything? My commissioner did a left side at all.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Sure. Um, great information for everyone. Thanks for coming out. Um, just to, to address a few things, we're not, I know that with the Citrus Springs MSBU, we're not gonna be messing with that. That's a separate thing. We're all aware of the lawsuit, et cetera, et cetera. We still put money into Citrus Springs that's not MSBU, so that would be what we're talking about today. And then Janet, it's very good to see you again. Haven't seen you in a while. TDC money cannot be used. However, um, I agree with the sales tax. That is the, a absolutely brilliant idea. I don't know, I'm not necessarily sure, given all the conversations I've had, that Commissioner Kennard is correct that it would not pass, but I think that we need to do some delving into that cause I do agree that if it's destined to fail, we don't put it out there. But that is, um, I do also agree that we need multiple mechanisms of funding to make this happen. Um, lastly, I had another thought, Mary. That thirty-eight line on the chart, does that total cost? Because the, the tsunami, by the way, the tsunami's already here, guys. It's just gonna have multiple waves, or just keep coming at us. So, does that total cost across that entire top line of thirty-eight million a year, does that total cost go down if we somehow miraculously find a way to throw more than thirty-eight million at it for the first few years to try to make sure that we're addressed, get down to the point where we are addressing sevens when they come to be sevens, right? So we get everything caught up. I'm looking at that hundred and eighty-eight million figure, and you know, just rough math, you chop that into four or five or whatever, and you come up with forty million, fifty million, something like that. That is a huge swing. Thirty-eight's already a huge swing. But I'm just interested in that fiscal conservatism of making sure that we're actually spending less and starting to get to that, um, chip and seal situation much, you know, faster. So, anyway, it's just worth a thought. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Finnegan, final thoughts?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the citizens in our community that have spoken today. Um, and maybe highlight, when we have these workshops for people to come out, because everybody that has approached us has been so solution-based and understand that the answer's complicated, but it's great if we can work together with the community. Uh, Mark Don from Pine Ridge, and, and those some before you. Pine Ridge residents have really, uh, done a lot of number crunching, a lot of research. Um, I wanna commend you just on the sheer work, time, hours, and effort that you put into this. And Stuart Bozeman, you know, a citizen, an expert in the asphalt industry that doesn't benefit or do any work in Citrus County, just lives here as a citizen to offer, to come here, take time off of work, to offer your time and expertise. I know you've given some of your, your knowledge to staff. So for everybody that participated today, I just wanna thank you for helping us to find the solutions. I think we have really smart people that live in Citrus County. So for people listening for upcoming workshops, um, please, if you, if you're at home and thinking about your solution-based ideas, we would love to hear them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Walt. Thank you, guys in the back. Appreciate everything you do, and, um, hopefully we'll find a solution and we'll get this taken care of. But again, it's that F-word, funds. And, um, I'm very, um, encouraged by this board up here. It's, um, it's nice to hear everybody coming up with solutions, and now we just have to figure out how to implement them. Thank you. And, um, at this time, I'm gonna, uh, let you know that we have another meeting at one o'clock today, May twenty-third, in this room. And I'm gonna adjourn this meeting. Thank you.